We're here, Mike.
Ready? Okay. I'm Lyle Herman from Lowry. I do some public speaking about water and how land use impacts it. So I'm gonna give a short presentation about land use. And the watershed that I'm gonna talk about is the one that we're in, which is the Swan Creek watershed. Jim is well familiar with it because he ranches in it and is impacted by it also. But the same principles apply to every watershed across the world, basically. So land use impacts it. US Geological Survey says the watershed that we're in, which is the Swan Creek watershed, is 368,842 acres. And I tell people it's an easy number to remember because three, six, nine. It's just about 369,000 acres. Of that, about 40% is cropland and 60% is grassland. What you're gonna find with cropland is the organic matter levels tend to be less, about 2%. So it's not uncommon to find farm ground that's, let's just say, anywhere from 1% and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2%, and grassland that can even approach 8% organic matter. Well, every percent of organic matter level change impacts water holding capacity by about 25,000 gallons. So you start with if you have 2% less organic matter on cropland than farmland, or than grassland, you got about 50,000 gallons more holy capacity with your native grasslands than you do with farm ground. In our watershed, because of the amount of land that's been converted for the last 125 years, we've got about 8 trillion gallons of water storage capacity that's been lost. Now, I'm not telling you, I'm not advocating a change of that. I'm just telling you, here's where we are. And I'm not telling you that our family hasn't contributed to it because we have farmland, just like a lot of people do within our watershed. So here we're at, and here's what has been happening. The numbers I'm showing you are cropland and grasslanders as of 2012. So those acres may have changed a little bit in the last seven years, but that's where they were at as of 2012. In particular, I'm gonna talk about the east Lowry Road, but I like to talk a little bit about Swan Lake because Swan Lake gives you an idea of also something that's contributing to our problem. First thing is for every inch of water in Swan Lake, which is 2,665 acres, every inch is 72 million gallons. But anybody that swam in Swan Lake as a kid, like I did growing up, knew there's mud at the bottom. The question is how much silt is in that lake? If there's 10 inches of silt in that lake, that's 720 million gallons of water holding capacity that's lost. If there's 20 inches, that's 1.4 trillion gallons that's been lost. And so my point in bringing this up is the soil has lost the ability to hold water. The lake has lost its ability to hold water. So there's consequences. And those consequences are felt by anybody that's impacted by water in any watershed. And in particular, I'm gonna talk about our watershed. If you look there on the right-hand side of the screen, you see a blue arrow. I'm gonna show you some data from a quarter of land that we've got that I used from NRCS. This is software program that NRCS has that is primarily designed for determining is that watershed big enough to generate runoff for a dugout or a dam to capture it? So what this says, if you look, I've got it circled there, good grazing. On 165 acres, circle that. If you look below it, it says 1.4%. That's the watershed slope. On those 165 acres, you can stand any place, anywhere, and you'll see a person. So you can go in one corner, the other corner, or the middle, you're gonna see someone. What it says on that storm number then, it says where the number two is, you look below it. A 24-hour range fall event occurs every other year in 24 hours. What they're saying is every other year you can expect a 2.1-inch rainfall event. The amount of runoff, it says .09. That's in inches, the runoff in inches. 1, uh, .09. Peak discharge and cubic feet per second is four. So it's just about nonexistent. Now, what I wanna show you is here's what happens on the same piece of ground, same event with minimum tillage. And I have to understand, the software was created back before you had much, if any, data about no till. But just look at what happens when you till that ground. Not heavy tillage, minimum tillage. Same rainfall event, it goes from .09 to .5. And then the peak discharge, that's the water running off. That's volume. It goes from four to 37, nine times as much. So land use and how we're using the land impacts water. That's the message. So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about the area that we want to deal with. We start, there's Swan Lake. The water leaves, the northwest corner of Swan Lake travels up to Section 4, then across to Section 5, where the blue arrow is, that's where the damage is that I'm here to talk to you about today. The orange arrow is where the town of Lowry is. The Swan Creek goes through our hay ground, which is in the yellow, and continues on through the town of Lowry, goes through Acaska and to the river. Our water issues are nothing new. Relatively new in terms of my lifetime. This was about 10 years ago when this occurred. This is two miles east of Lowry. And, you know, you can see what Swan Creek looks like there. But I wanted to show you this map. This is an aerial map from FSA. I figured it was in the 60s. And if you look at those squares and you see designs around there, lines, everybody had about 40 acres. Some people were lucky enough to have 60. But there's one, two, three, four, five different landowners that at that point had cut their ground with a sicklemore, mowed it, dump raped it, bucked it up. And you can see the dots on there, the haystacks. Well, I can remember as a kid, that's what we did with that ground. This is what it tends to look like today. That picture I took two years ago, that picture at the same time, that picture's about four years ago. So this is what we're accustomed to seeing when we have a lot of water. This is what it looks like today. This video I took, let's see if we can get it to go. For some reason, I've got a video on here. Let's see if we can get it to go. Is that where I saw my arrow? Okay.
June 1st, 2019.
I actually wanna turn the volume down. So this video I just took this week, and this is Swan Creek about a mile west of Swan Lake. It's about a half mile wide. What you're seeing is water that's probably at the deepest, two feet, but it's about a half mile across. Swan Creek, and right there's the damage. Swan Creek does not channelize until it gets about a mile and a half east of Lowry when there's enough slope. And then it narrows down to probably a couple hundred feet. And by the time it gets to the town of Lowry, it's probably about 30 feet across. The culverts that you're gonna see to handle it are right there, and they're three four-foot culverts. Now, if you go to Hoben on Highway 20, west of Hoben, you'll see a huge box culvert. And north of Hoben on 47, you'll see even a bigger one. And so all that water comes into Swan Lake, plus some more tributaries that dump into the lake. And then we expect to handle it with three four-foot culverts once it leaves the lake. And it doesn't. And so, and Penny is well familiar with this spot because it's not the first time that this has occurred. As a matter of fact, we, her and I talked about it the last time it happened. And I said, Penny, whatever you do, don't build this up. And they didn't. The county did not build it up. Thankfully, they didn't. Because what happens when we build this back up to grade is it backs the water up. It's like a dam. It backs the water up and puts a lot of county road underwater back to the east. So what we need to do to fix this spot is we need to probably excavate it down a little bit and then fill it with oversize. I spoke with Ellen Frost, you know, and I took Marion down there and I showed him. You know, in a perfect world, we'd pay to have it concrete and drive through the water. But I'm not here to ask the county to spend that kind of money. What I'm here is to ask the county to put in some oversize. Ellen and I met and looked at it, and he thinks he can take it down on your right-hand side, which is the east side. There, you can see that the grass is still intact there. What happened is it started to come over the road, and it just like a waterfall. And it started eroding it back to the east until it got to the sod on the east side. And there, the erosion stopped. Right now, you can get through it with a car and a semi. If we get a half-inch rain, we can't get through it. Anything like that, you can't with a tractor or a pickup or an ATV. But Ellen and I looked at it, and, you know, it's uncertain as to the exact amount, but he thought probably 250 ton, which should be about five semi loads, or 10 semi loads, would fix it. But, you know, we don't know that. The closest, I made some calls. Jensen's got a pit by Harriet. It's a 50-mile haul. Brownlee's got a pit by Hoben, which is about a 20-mile haul. That would probably be the cheapest option to go. Ellen is very capable of fixing this spot with oversize because he's done it in other places on the east side of Swan Lake and it's held fine. In a spring like this, it's held up good. His recommendation would be to probably excavate this down a little bit and then start backfilling and packing with oversize. And when you get enough oversize in it, then put some gravel on top of it. I know between here and the river that there are other places that either the county or individual landowners have got crossings made in Swan Creek. Most of the time, if they're successful, they're gonna have a real good oversize base in them. So I'm here to ask you to authorize the county to spend the money that it takes to, let's try building this causeway up with oversize and keeping the level low enough so that it doesn't, when it starts going over this spillway here, that it doesn't flood or doesn't backwater up on the road to the east. That would be my recommendation. And I don't know, you know, without a county highway superintendent, I don't know who you authorize to move forward on doing it. It might be that it's more than likely it's not gonna happen till after Gary starts anyway. But I guess I'd like to see some authorization to have this fixed right rather than just putting gravel on.
So there's no culvert going through?
No. I'm standing about right on top of the culverts. Actually, it was well-designed. Those culverts are well-protected. It never, it never goes over the road by the culverts. The culverts are probably, I'm gonna say, two feet higher than if this was level right here going across. The culverts are probably two feet higher. They're well-protected. If we do this the way I'm suggesting, it'll act like a dam. If you dam, it gets too much water coming into it, it goes over the spillway. But the trickle tube is running all the time. And so these four, these four-foot culverts, and we have the three of them there, act like trickle tubes. Right now, they're running between 80 to 90% capacity and are going to for quite a while. Because what's happened, the reason this vegetation has changed, yeah, we might be getting more water because of the lack of capacity, but we're also getting silt. And you get a lot of water in there. What ends up happening is that it forms a giant filter strip. And so any water that's coming through there that's got sediment in it, it filters it out. I'm not gonna live long enough to see this. But there's gonna come a day when Swan Lake will be a big slope because of the sediment that's in it. And this out here, what really got me started is on both sides of the road here is our hay ground. You cannot, the best tractor with the best suspension, you cannot go over 3.8 miles an hour. Trust me, I've tried it. Because it's so rough in there. And it's because of the silt that's being deposited. We go in there and you disc it up and you try and level it, make it really smooth, and five years later, you're back where you were. And so the vegetation has changed. That picture I showed you from the 60s, those predominantly western wheatgrass that we cut down there. Occasionally, there'd be some cherry cord grass, which is a real water-tolerant grass, grows up tall. Now there's none of that. That's all gone, and it's been displaced by garrison creeping foxtail and reed's canary. And if it's deep enough water, long enough, then we have cattails. And these, what you see there is garrison creeping foxtail. That's more water tolerant than western wheatgrass, but not as water tolerant as cattails. And so if the water's standing there long enough, then we end up with nothing but cattails.
Will Ellen have intentions of trying to do it with water?
No. He said we gotta let it go down a little bit first. As soon as it's, as soon as it's fit, he said to, then he would like the authorization to do what it takes to fix it. That's what he's looking for, some direction. And I don't know, you know, what we should do in terms of today, but I'd sure like to see this commission authorize somebody when the time comes to get in there with some equipment. And he told me just a payloader and, you know, a truck bringing the oversize in. It doesn't need to be stockpiled. He can deal with it as it comes in. And he said, I can fix that. And if somebody wants to go and see, I've driven through some of the areas that he's talking about, north of Hoben. Anybody that's driven in that area knows, Penny would know what I'm talking about. And he said they held up fine this spring. So I have no reason, he made those. I have no reason to believe that he does not know how to do it.
I'm sure it would work because Jim's got one where he drives across all of them.
Well, and here's the thing. One mile east of Lowry, the county's got one in a section line. We'll go back and we'll start driving it here shortly. It's got a culvert through it, and the water goes over the top of it. And we'll be driving across it before very long. Because the culvert's pretty small. I haven't tried recently, but the culvert's only one, and it's probably a two-foot hole. So the thing I'm, the reason I brought that first part up to tell you, this problem is not gonna go away. This was not just gonna happen this year, and we can build it back up and forget about it. These problems with water are, the Lake Hiddenwood event that we had a year ago? Yeah, there's a big rainfall, no question about it. But if you think that our water problems are gonna be an anomaly that we're not gonna see anymore, I don't believe that. So I'd like to see the commission make a motion to do something or authorize somebody to do something to fix this. And maybe there doesn't need to be a motion, I don't know. But somebody needs to take some action so when the time comes, we do the right thing.
What's the commission feel like doing there? We know it needs to be fixed.
Yes.
I guess I, you know, being down there with Lyle and seeing how that whole thing works and with all the pictures and everything, this oversized rock idea, I think, looks like it's by far the cheapest route. I mentioned to him, doing a concrete area that would run over would probably be the best, but like I said, it's gonna be a whole lot more money to do that. I guess I would, I would like to make a motion that we would authorize Frosty to do that or authorize Gary to go in and do the oversized rock and fix that up with the natural drainage with the oversized rock and gravel.
You made that into a motion?
Yes.
One second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion on that?
I guess I would like to see this, we'll have Gary handle it. Because it isn't gonna get done the next two weeks anyway.
I think what they're probably getting at is telling Gary that he has the go-ahead to go ahead and do that.
I would guess Gary would know that, but... I would guess Gary probably would own without covered up the natural. But that's what, that's what the highway superintendent does. I think there's, I think there's more to it than just hauling some rock up and dumping on the road. I think you gotta document some of that stuff. Am I right, Penny?
Yes.
I think it was in the state and stuff.
Well, we have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Is that, Lyle?
Yep. Basically the only spot on the road you're talking about down there. Are there other spots?
Well, what happens with, until it gets low enough, it backs water up further to the east. But that's really, if that's low enough, then that solves a lot of the problems to the east. There's some soft spots in the roads further to the east that, I agree with Jim, and Gary, when they're down there, when they're putting gravel on, he'll see those places and he'll address those. But this is, this is a pretty major spot that needs to be, we need to do something. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lyle.
Thanks, Lyle.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lyle.
27, discussion regarding leachate pond discharge.
Our leachate pond filled up on the landfill, which has never happened before. So we had to discharge it. The state came out and they told us that we needed to discharge it right now and told us how to do it. So we did complete that on Saturday. We have a cell that has a bunch of leachate in it that we need to get run into the leachate pond. They gave us a deadline of June 14th on that, so we're in the process of working on that right now. We also received some, a quote from Wink Engineering for repairs. We have a slope failure. We had a culvert collapse that runs our storm water to the pond. And the new cell that we put out there is, it's getting a lot of leachate and causing a lot of problems. So we're looking at ways we can minimize it. So the total cost for all three would be $19,300.
I'll just comment a little bit on that. The slope failure, that all happened on that last drain that we got. More than two, it was the storm water pond and then that leachate pond. On the south side of that bank, oh, it's probably about 60 foot, started to slide down towards the bottom.
It shows it on this.
And then, guess whoever put those, the storm water pipes that come in, they come down that hill from up on top, all at the same time when that, we've got that last drain, that one pipe to the east, it says existing storm water pipe. That one just dropped, probably, I'm gonna say, four feet. I mean, I bet it was the week before, when the guys in Lantho, he said, probably should clean this out at the bottom. So I walked right there the week before, and like I said, that pipe just dropped. And then that slide area was all in that last rain that we had. So that's what that's about. But the other stuff they wanna do, it's in that new cell that got dug. Because I told you it was a month and a half, not quite, when the state guy was there that had washed, we had all that water this storm, it had washed that, where storm water's set on top. So he had me put a pipe in to take the water, the storm water, around the top. Not way top, but on the next level. And that was all from the guy from the state that wanted it done. Anyhow, there's something we need to do with, with that pond down there. It's so huge.
You mean with the cell?
Yes. So Becky, the three areas here, the slope failure repair, the storm pipe repair, all of that's, the total is that 19,3? Have all of those three areas fixed by this company, by me?
That's the design meetings and drawings. That's there once.
And storm water pipes, I'm gonna guess that they are, I don't know, 250 feet long coming off that hill. This...
Okay, so 19,000 for that is anywhere. Who's gonna actually do the work there?
Well, that would depend on the amount, if we have to bid it, or...
So we would still have to have somebody else come in on top of this to complete the work.
There was also a suggestion with that storm water pipe, to pull the pipe out and pack the trench full of riprap to dissipate the energy of the storm water before it reaches the pond. I don't know if that would be a better idea because replacing that pipe is gonna be difficult.
If you've never been out there and looked, I guess I truthfully never had to look at them, but the, but the pipes are almost exposed, the culverts.
They are.
They are exposed.
Well, the one wasn't quite, but I mean, a lot of it is all exposed, so... You'd almost think it should be able to be done a little different without putting those pipes back in, or super-plastic back in, they're gonna last. The culvert ain't gonna last.
Culvert's all rusted out.
So what's the commission feel like doing here?
I would guess we're gonna have to do something. And I would guess that would be a start.
I'll make motions to approve the proposals from Wink.
Okay, motion on the floor. I need a second.
I have a second.
You got a second. Any more discussion on that? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Discussion regarding weed and pest meeting?
Weed and board, weed and pest board out of meeting. There was discussion about a GPS system from Raven. The Raven CR7, and it comes from Benko Products. The cost of the system is $2,200. The best benefit out of this, it would track what has been sprayed, the date and time it was sprayed, and what chemical it was sprayed. There's also weather flow options to track the weather while you're spraying it at that exact time for an additional $80. Just for, for, to protect us, this would track everything and you could see exactly wherever Dave has been out to spray. And if there's ever a question about drifting or anything, we would be protected or to show what the weather is, the wind direction, if there's any spray issues, drifting issues. This was basically an insurance policy to protect us. $2,200, I think it's a great deal. The board voted on it. It was unanimous vote to put it in the budget. But actually, he does have it in his budget for this year to go ahead and get this. So with your approval, he'll get it coming. Yes. Only $2,200, but he's got it in there to pay for it. Yes, only twenty-two hundred dollars, but he's got it in there to pay for it. The other big issue that, uh, was discussed was the pickup. Dave says that if he's got four-hundred gallons of water in that pickup, the fastest he can possibly drive that thing anywhere is forty-five miles an hour. I think it's more than time that, uh, we take a look at replacing this pickup. Uh, if we get it, if we go on the state bid, there is a pickup that we can get. Uh, it's a brand-new pickup, it's a Ford F-350, one ton with duals. The price of that is thirty-one thousand, five hundred. Let me double check, he sent me a text on it, but I'm sure that's what it is.
But then, the bed, remember, it has to be changed, correct?
Yep, yeah, I'm getting to that. There it is right here. Okay, thirty-one five for the pickup, it's a F-350 dual, dual rear wheel, four-by-four. Comes from the state bid from Lamb Moller Company. That comes with no box at all. And then for four thousand, we'd get a flatbed installed on it. And then we'd have to take it to, uh, Rapid City to have our sprayer unit taken out and mount it onto the flatbed, the tanks and pumps and everything. And I'm not sure what that cost is gonna be yet. So, uh, recommendation was made to the board and they said, uh, they agreed with it. Uh, if the commission, we were doing our budget, that we put this on the budget for next year to pay for the pickup and the flatbed and every, and the swap out, put it in the budget. So, in January, we could get the pickup. These prices are good through September first, so we could technically order it by September first. The prices will not change after, I think it's the fifteenth of September, the prices will probably go up. This way, we could, uh, get it ordered, put it in the budget, pay for it on January second, and pick it up January second. And take it down to Rapid City and have it all swapped out and have it ready for next year. Dave knows he's gonna have to put up with this pickup that we got now for spring this year. But looking forward, next year, we'd have a new pickup. So that was the board's recommendation, as come, uh, budget time, that this gets all put on the budget for next year.
What's the commissioner feel about this?
I would say, she just put it in the budget. As far as the GPS deal, that seems like a really good buy for what they've called it. Last four factors, we've offered, or we've authorized, or we personally buy at least two of the ones with a lot more money. And I don't know why we haven't got them, I, I thought.
I thought we authorized it, I'm sure last year.
Yeah, I thought Jake had it bought and put in.
Far as I know, there's nothing in yet.
No.
Um, does that require a computer system to get the data out of them, because he does not have one?
I think it goes straight to the cloud, so pretty much any computer could pick it up.
Has he got a smartphone?
Yeah, he can send it to a phone.
Somebody can, not maybe somebody good.
I mean, from what, what it sounded like, uh, we could enter, tie it into our county's website so anybody could see what has already been sprayed or whatever. But for twenty-two hundred dollars, that'd be the cheapest insurance policy we could get.
I agree, some of them were up over ten thousand, that we looked at, Sean was, I was thinking about forty-five hundred is what Jake found.
This is twenty-two hundred dollars for that, eighty dollars for the weather flow option that tracks the, the weather, ties that straight into all the other data.
I, I, I think, I personally think it'd be money well spent. And they've got it in their budget already, I think.
Yeah.
Kevin, what you're asking for right now is twenty-two eighty to buy that.
Well, he's got the budget to buy it, not anything.
And then the other, just put it in your?
The other, we would just put it in the budget for next year.
Anybody else have anything on this?
We need a motion to put that in there or not, or just?
I don't even think so.
We have to for?
Anybody else have anything else?
I think it's about time we get a new pickup. For thirty-one five, with dualies on it, the dualies are gonna help more than anything.
And we probably shouldn't have put transmission either last time.
No.
Actually, it took junk air. Anything else on this? And we'll move on to whole business. Yes.
Did you guys want me to get a additional quote from Wink on not replacing the culvert?
As a second option, it would be good.
We might do a lot, yeah. I would think that would be a good idea, if there's, if there's another option out there.
Uh, is it from Park on three-nineteen or Sitka?
Jamie sent a letter. I haven't heard a word.
Yeah, basically the letter, we just suggested what we thought would resolve the issue, but we haven't heard anything from either one.
I don't think, uh, the culvert, Sitka, they was out there one day, but they just camped some dirt around the edges of it, but.
They haven't contacted me, and I thought that if they were gonna contact, I thought it would be Jamie.
Are you talking about the Sitka Road or the three-nineteen?
Both of them.
Um, we didn't send him a letter saying anything about the Sitka Road culvert. We just discussed the two approaches that were of concern on the junction out here.
On three-nineteen.
With regard to selling the oil, um, but, um.
But I had talked to Mike previously already about that, knowing that there's an issue there. He hasn't contacted on either one.
We need to get something done with that.
We need a draft letter about the, is able, culvert?
I, I do know our, we know the highway superintendent is well worth, I, I would guess he will handle that issue one. Because I visited with him about it, he brought it back.
No doubt, it's gotta get something, gotta get done about it.
I know that, somebody screwed up somewhere, and I'm guessing it, I don't know, but I would guess it's intrusive. Because there should be no reason we should have to backleach say that culvert four times to the settlement.
Yeah, there's no reason the water's going under it.
You're absolutely right, they're not designed to do that, so, anyway. Our highway superintendent, our highway superintendent will take care of that problem.
Any other whole business?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mary hasn't gone.
Yes.
I guess I'd like to ask the question, why the board refuses to address any of the questions that I have? When I'm, when I was on the agenda, I had several questions, but the board has been reluctant to answer those?
It's seventeen.
No, today.
They can, they can answer however they want to, I guess, I mean, I can't, I don't speak for anybody else, I don't know what you're asking.
Would you like me to begin what I addressed the board on? The board didn't hear what I had to say when I was?
Yeah, we heard you.
And you don't care?
What specific questions do you have?
Okay, I would like, no one thought the authorization for the signature on the Butler contract?
Okay, we discussed that at the meeting and why we had to get it done, and we did.
Why you did it, yes, but who authorized the auditor to sign?
I did.
At a board meeting?
No, I, we explained that to you exactly how that was done, now that, now that we didn't do it in the meeting? I mean, I don't, I guess I'm not sure why you're, why that's, that it's the end of the world.
Because county business is being conducted outside of the board meetings.
I guess, that is your opinion, I guess, I wouldn't, I just don't really think that that's how it was really handled. You might, in your, in your mind, you might think it was.
So you did the extended warranty at a board meeting and approved it at a board meeting?
I felt it was very efficient to call the board members and talk to them. That's exactly how I did it.
I know, but that's not doing it in a board meeting. County business is supposed to be conducted at a board meeting. You could've called a special meeting had it had to be done right away. That option wasn't used, and why not?
That's exactly what I did.
So as chairperson, you just take it upon yourself to do it then?
No, it was just that it needed to be done exactly at that moment.
So that's how we can assume that other county business will be done? If it needs to be done at, at that moment, it will be carried out at a board meeting?
I don't, I don't think there ever has been anything that had to be done at exact moment. The no hours were up, I mean, I'm pretty sure, if I remember right, Chad very much said exactly how that went. If we went over on them hours, exactly what that would've cost the county. So I don't believe he was trying to jeopardize the county in any way. It was to try to not spend a bunch of money by doing it that way.
It was already in the budget for it to be replaced. So it, it, like I said, he gave a good presentation. That should've been a presentation at a meeting for the board to decide if they wanted to extend the warranty further or things was already in the budget to replace it. I guess I'm just questioning because it, the process that was done was not done at a board meeting. And that's how county business is supposed to be done?
That's how it was handled. We're gonna move on.
Okay, my other question is, on the agenda, so you're not gonna allow people to speak on items that are listed on the agenda? I would like a yes or no answer so that I know for future meetings.
Am I going to?
Are you going to allow the public here to ask questions on an agenda item?
We already went through that, Linda.
I would like your answer today, are you going to do it, yes or no?
Well, yes it is, it's five, we're given five minutes at open forum.
No, not during open forum, I'm talking about when the item is being discussed on the agenda. As you go through each agenda item, are you going to allow people in the, from the public to address the board during discussion?
Yes.
I feel like we're getting off track here, right? I mean, to me, the business of the county is the commissioner's job and duty. When you want to approach the commission, if you need to question or have a concern, you should talk to your commissioners individually, call them on the phone and discuss that. I feel that the business that's being held and done here is the job of the commissioners. And if we have to have input by outside, uh, people during that discussion, then I think that is the option that we have to, to look at. But for us to sit here and have everybody discuss a, an opinion on a, on a particular business question, I, I don't think that's right.
Yes, Jim. Right now, your position is, is you do not allow anyone to speak, uh, at, on agenda items. That's what you guys decided last time, you need to be uniform on that. You can't pick and choose, that's the problem that we've created here is, is you gotta be uniform. Just like you were saying, you can't pick and choose. You need to either say, "We're not gonna allow input from the audience," or we are. Right now, at, two meetings ago, you said, "We are not gonna allow input from the audience with regard to the agenda items," and we violated that today. Again, so, that's again why we have these problems, because we're not following our rules.
Then the answer's gonna be no, then we're not going to. You'll have the, the open meeting, the public forum, and that's where you'll have your five minutes.
Okay, then my next question is, I asked to be put on the agenda today and my name was on there. But I did not know until the meeting was called to order if I was going to be left on there or I was going to be removed, is that how it's going to continue to be? Could you add or delete on the agenda?
That's how, whatever it's gonna be on there, is just how it is, that's just how the protocol is on that. We're gonna, we're gonna adopt the agenda, and that's how it's gonna be. Whether or not somebody wants to add, if one of the, the commissioners want to add something or delete something, it's up to them, it'll be done on that date.
Okay, so my name appears on the agenda, was it because I requested it or was it because the commissioner requested it?
The commissioner did request it.
Yes, but was it because I had requested it or because the commissioner did?
Because both of you did.
So if my name appears on the agenda, or anybody that calls in to be on the agenda, and it appears on the agenda when it's published, that means it stays on there, or can you delete it?
That's what I just said a second ago, that at the beginning of the meeting, when the meeting starts, when I ask for that, that's when they're gonna decide. You can't decide now, what's gonna stay on the agenda, what's gonna come out. It's, it's what's gonna happen that day when.
Two, two-thirds of it, yes.
I think for clarity purposes, basically, the chair can decide what goes on the agenda. Uh, again, it's not a state law, it's under Robert's Rules of Order, which is what we have elected to follow at the beginning of the meeting. If a person has been allowed to be put on by the chair, again, there can be another vote right at the beginning of the meeting to remove that person or issue or whatever, or add something to that. So it's a multi-step process, so even if you're put on the agenda, you may be removed right at the beginning of the meeting, that's an option that's available.
Okay, that's what I would like to have clarified.
I would like to, if you're gonna get put on the agenda, I would like on there what you're gonna be talking about.
I did provide that introduction.
I, you had no idea what you, all the, the agenda says is Linda.
I provided it to the auditor's office.
The chair advised me just to put Linda Beaman on there.
If the, if we were to remove somebody, or remove someone off, or add something onto the agenda, it is going to be a motion made, seconded, and a two-thirds majority have to approve it.
Okay, that's fine.
So.
I had asked Mr. Schilling, he said it's on the agenda, that it was on there, but I needed to have it clarified that because it's on there, I, I know it can come off with a two-thirds vote, but I just want it clarified that, yes, it can be removed.
Yes.
Okay, so if, if I were to ask to be put on the agenda, I, I, one of my agenda items was county assistant. Can that be put down there when that discussion is happening? Or will it be just under me at the beginning of the meeting?
Didn't put that on there because it was already gonna be discussed, the county assistant, that's why. Didn't put that on there because it was already gonna be discussed, the county assistant, that's why I didn't put it on there. For you, because it was already gonna be discussed.
I know, but I asked to be put on the agenda so I could speak during that time, because you're not allowing the public to speak when you have your agenda items on here. That's why I asked to be put on for the county assistant. So, when I, uh, when I present my agenda items, they will just be at the beginning of the meeting and not during the meeting when those items are discussed?
That's when you're gonna be put on.
At the beginning.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's the same thing, I'll go back to it again, it all depends upon what the commission wants to do. So.
So when will the commission decide this, at the beginning of the meeting?
That's exactly when it's gonna be decided, exactly when it's approval of the agenda. If it's gonna stay. If I put it on there, that's fine. That's not saying it's gonna stay, that's what I'm trying to say.
I'm not questioning whether it has to stay on there or not, I'm just questioning the process that you're going to use, so you're gonna, if a, if a person from the public comes in, requests to be put on the agenda. I did list two items for today, one of them was county assistant. I guess I would like to be put on when the county assistant was being discussed, so if I had questions, I could ask them at that time. Otherwise, as a public person sitting here, I'm not allowed to ask any questions. That's why I'd like to be put on there when the county assistant was being discussed. I guess I can use it, for instance, Lyle Furman came in today and had his discussion, he wasn't listed just on the agenda, he was listed under Highway Department. Is there a difference in that?
I think we're gonna just move on right now. That's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Just a, just a comment.
Maybe Linda, I, I don't know. None of us are proficient in Robert's Rules of Order, I'll be the first to admit that. But that's what we're trying to follow. To me, maybe look at Robert's Rules of Order and see how they do that. Because nobody has, for the most part, and you look at Robert's Rules of Order, from what I understand, they really don't have the ability to come in and talk to as a, as a commission on any individual point without the permission from the commission. So, I guess maybe just look into that idea, look at Robert's Rules of Order and see how that works.
Basically, I think what Mrs. Beaman is saying is, is that she has multiple issues that she wants to discuss before the commission. If the chair decides to only put her down as her name and not specific items, how does she know that her items are to be addressed? Again, that goes back to, we need to decide what we're gonna do on that. Because right now, if her name is put on the agenda and there is no item to address, technically, she shouldn't be addressing anything. And also, if she is not allowed to participate in the discussion when the issue comes up, that's why she wants to know why she should be put under each specific issue, because technically, we are not allowing anyone to address from the audience issues that are in front of the commission on the agenda, even though we violated the rule today.
Anything else? We need a new business.
Move for a German.
We got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
I'll say, say aye.
I will try to see if I can do this. I could send it to real myself. But I don't know how to send it. Sometimes I can try to see if I can do that out here by now, I bet you did. Tomorrow and say, okay, this is good to do.
You should, you should leave us something like that if you're.
Okay.
So just take your phone out, record your line line.
Okay.
Should work.
I'll give it my best.
Thank you, appreciate it. I know.
Usually I worry about that two-year one.
I know, that's my fault.
No doubt. No doubt. Two.
You could've done one of them.
No, I can't hear. It couldn't be done today. If I did, I can't.